Mysteries to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Girl Scout troop number eleven forty-seven to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So if you will, all please rise.
Mayor, I'm praying on behalf of the pasty head, Carl trouble, I'm assistant pastor, Mission Field.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you and praise you for this day, Lord, and we invite you into this meeting, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you would be with the board members and the mayor on tonight, Lord, as they conduct the business in Hope Meals for the people and for the residents, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for keeping us throughout this day. But we ask a special blessing upon the law enforcement, the fire and rescue, and also the EMS. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the great things, Lord, you're doing here in Hope Meals. Lord, we just ask, Lord, that you would continue to shower your blessings and anointing upon us. Lord, we can't do anything without you. We know with you, all things are possible to them that believe. So we just thank you and just praise you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, girls, you want to come to the, come up, thank you. This is from Girl Scout troop eleven forty-seven.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have certificates for them? And ladies, I have a certificate for you.
Can we get your picture, too?
Yes, ma'am, you sure can. I'll come right down there with you. Hey, Alyssa, Paul. And we have, um, Charlieski. Thank you. Okay, Haley P. Thank you so much. And Corrissa's a north. Give you a little. My favorite little tongue. And these girls, this troop meets at, um, Covenant United and then it's closed also. Come on here, you're happy.
There you go.
I don't.
Happy moment.
Hi, lady. Thank you so much. Thank you. At this time, is there any additions or deletions to our agenda? I would like to add one addition to the presentations, and that would be for Henry Swartout from our youth leadership to make a presentation, and it would be short, and if we could, put him at the very beginning. Is there any other additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve, with that a minute.
Have a motion to approve, to have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed. At this time, I'd like to recognize Henry Swartout. He is the chairman of our youth leadership committee to give us some information at this time.
Um, hello, everybody. I'm Henry Swartout from the youth leadership committee. I'd just like to first start off by, the main presentation was for the multimodal congestion plan. But given that we have, um, just, we were missing a few members for our presentation, and also that we would like to view the survey that's come out and kind of further our opinions on it, and bring in more opinions from our other members. We're going to go and ask if we can delay this, our presentation, to the next meeting that we will be at, which will be, um, May twenty-first, and that's, um, that's everything, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Looking forward to it. Thank you for being here this evening also. Next, we have a presentation from Stephen Fleming with Fleming and Associates.
Mayor and commissioners, good evening. Uh, as it was requested, Steve Fleming is here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the design, about going forward with the project on D L A, so, without further ado.
So my name is Steve Fleming. I'm the senior principal at Fleming and Associates, a consulting engineering firm in Fayetteville, North Carolina. We were the designers for your pier and your boardwalk that has recently been constructed. And Mr. Cruz said that you were considering extending the boardwalk, but there's some discussion as to whether or not you want to have a boardwalk, or you want to have a bulkhead, and what would be the advantages and disadvantages of doing that. So he asked me to come here tonight and answer any questions. I don't have a presentation, but I'm available to answer any questions, uh, pro or con that you might have.
Okay, does anyone that would like to, uh, ask Mr. Fleming a question to start with?
I can start, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Fleming, thank you for being here tonight. Um, my main question was, um, would the bulkhead be viable without the boardwalk as far as erosion control? I think on the old bulkhead, of course, it'd been there a number of years. Sometimes you get backwash behind the wall. Um, is it, in your opinion, we have to have the boardwalk to, to make the, uh, bulkhead more viable?
I don't think so. I think you could do the standalone bulkhead. You would need to change the design of the top of the bulkhead a little bit to make it more friendly, so that you don't have the piles and the lagging, sort of irregular, there would be a tripping hazard, or hard to, for lawn maintenance and weed eating and things like that. But I think you could have a standalone, uh, bulkhead and also handle any erosion control issues. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming, thank you very much, sir, for coming.
You're welcome.
And for the design of the pier and the boardwalk, from your other project. Our board is mainly concerned, and, and we made a motion, uh, and it passed, that we were looking at a standalone bulkhead, uh, to be designed along with, uh, erosion control measures, uh, and a kayak launch area, and then some sloping of the, uh, of the, of the hill, that's, well, or the cliff, as some people call it. Uh, are you able to design all of those things that, uh, that, that the board is looking for?
I think so. I, we understand, uh, some of the things you need, uh, or want. Uh, the kayak launch is not very difficult. Uh, you also have things in your preliminary plan, swings and access to the water, and then there's, uh, ADA things that you might want to do to make it easier for people to get into the water. So we're not fully aware of all the things that you're required by code to do, or that you really want to do. And we're not sure if you just want stairs into the water. Building the bulkhead makes access into the lake a little bit more difficult, because you have to drop down over a bulkhead, and you don't want to jump off of it, so.
Right.
You have egress. If somebody was in the lake and there was an emergency, it'd be a little bit more difficult to get to them. So there are a lot of negatives to having a bulkhead, but there are a lot of positives also. But I think we're well able to design the features that you decide that you want. If we do the bulkhead, we'll have to have egress into the water, and that could be steps. But then there are people who want to get into the water that can't navigate steps. And so you either have to have some type of ramp in addition to the steps, or some type of lift assembly that can set somebody down in the water. But the water is very shallow, uh, on the other, on the water side of the bulkhead, it's so shallow. So if you sat a person down there that was handicapped, they would still have an obstacle to get into the water deep enough where they can be buoyant. So there's a lot of issues, but the primary advantage, I think, of the bulkhead is being able to slope the steep bank. Because right now, your bank is too steep for a family to lay out a picnic blanket and lay there. It's just too steep. So if you build the vertical bulkhead and you get your grade up three or four feet at the lake, then you can grade the bank back and generate a slope that's comfortable to, you know, lay out there.
That's, that's a pretty good perspective, because, uh, that echoes what a tremendous amount of our community citizens, you know, say when they're down there about that, about how steep, uh, that bank is, you know, that's going it down into the water. The main emphasis on the bulkhead, uh, and those areas, of course, has to be ADA compliant. And the erosion control, uh, is directly tied to our permit, as you well understand and know. Uh, so those are the concerns that I had, was just to make sure that all this can be covered in your design. And, and if you can do that, then that's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Warner.
Yes. Um, Mr. Fleming, thank you for coming. Um, I, maybe I misunderstood the beginning, but I was in the impression that, um, with the grant and everything, that might, we might be able to have that the boardwalk went along with, uh, the bulkhead, that the boardwalk was more or less for the ADA compliance. Um, where does that stand now?
Well, I don't think that the boardwalk is necessary for ADA compliance in, in terms of access to the water. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm talking about the, with the people in wheelchairs, or walkers, or even mothers in strollers, how they, because a lot of times they can't walk, roll across the grass or the sand.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm not sure that it would be required, but it would definitely be helpful to help them get, if they had a layout area or picnic area, out in the grassy areas. Uh, it would be much easier for a handicap person to get in a wheelchair and wheel them down the boardwalk, uh, to that area, and then they could cut across a shorter distance to where they're picnicking. So it would make it much more helpful. I'm not sure you're required to do that, but it would definitely be helpful. However, there are some risks if you have wheelchair-bound people going down the boardwalk, and you don't have some type of barrier or guardrail. Through, so there's always pluses and minuses to, and I think that you'll find that with that type of waterfront structures and features, there are many times not things that are required by code, but that you might want to do anyway. So I think you'd have to consider those things. But the answer is yes. It would be easier for a wheelchair-bound person to go down a wood boardwalk and then access the grassy area.
Thank you.
And toddlers, as it is right now, toddlers, once they trip, they would roll down that steep bank. They could hardly recover. It's just too steep, um, to navigate by foot.
Thank you.
Questions?
Is the ADA accessibility into the swimming area possible from, toward, from the boat ramp area into it that way?
I think it can be that.
Where it would be more of a ramp, rather than steps?
I think it could be a ramp in that area, uh, but it would be a long way to travel if, uh, you know, depending, your swimming area goes well beyond that area. So it would be a long area for them to navigate if that was the only egress or access to the swim area. Seems like it would be helpful somewhere else on the other end to also have a.
Steps.
Steps.
But having the actual ramp for, wheelchairs could be done through the boat ramp area, and then another egress into the water, maybe steps for non-handicapped.
Yep, you could do whatever you decide to do. I think all those questions, I guess the big question is, is do you, do you want to build a bulkhead? Or is, is there a reason not to, uh, the decision of how to do your egress and ADA and access for canoes and handicap people, I think can all be worked into the bulkhead by openings in the bulkhead, and those openings could go out into the water, or you could recess them into the bulkhead, so that they don't protrude out into the water. So all those things could be worked out in schematic design. But it seems like, you know, making the decision as to whether or not you actually wanted a bulkhead, there are other ways to flatten that area out. You could, and we were, um, Mr. Cruz and I and Don Cisco were discussing, we went to the site an hour before this meeting, and we walked the site again. And it is possible, I wasn't going to mention it, but there are other things you could do. For example, you could lower the grade along that entire area by going along your, your walking path along the road, and you could drop the grade there and build a retaining wall. Uh, you know, possibly come from the walkway path along the road, go five to ten feet and drop a retaining wall there, where you drop all of that earth down, maybe four feet, and build a hedgerow there, so you have a divider, a nice hedgerow divider from the busy road to where you create more of a private environment in your grass area. And then you could lower all of that grass area and eliminate the bulkhead. So I haven't seen that presented, but as I walk, uh, the property, that is, should also, I think, be considered, because then the entire grassy area would be lowered down, and you could see into the lake from a long way away. You could have a buffer by your, your walking trail alongside the road, and, uh, eliminate the bulkhead at the lake. So that, that's another option.
So the grass would, the grassy area would just slope.
It would have a slight, it would be a very, very slight slope that you'd hardly notice, and it would terminate, uh, you know, on a grass edge at the lake. Um, now, the ducks like to walk out of the lake and walk onto the grass area, so a bulkhead makes the, the geese have to fly, which they don't like. So a bulkhead would keep the geese from having such, there are a lot of things to consider. But a grassy area like that would be very nice. You have your, the, one difficulty would be handling the gazebo, because the gazebo would then be at a higher elevation.
Yeah.
And that retaining wall would have to wrap around by the gazebo. So it would take some planning, but there, you don't, to achieve, um, a less steep slope, you don't have to build, necessarily build a bulkhead. There are other ways to do it.
Cost-wise, if you, you use the other means, would it be less expensive than the bulkhead?
We haven't, since we just talked about that idea today, we haven't done any estimating on that. There'd be a lot of earth to move. And it depends on if you need that earth somewhere else. Uh, but there'd be a fair, fair amount of earth to move and to haul off. Uh, the retaining wall, I think, would be about the cost of the bulkhead. You know, possibly maybe a little less than the cost of the bulkhead. So other than the amount of earth you move, it would be very, very similar. You wouldn't need a boardwalk, then you'd have a grassy edge all the way to your lake. But that, that is another option. I like the idea of some type of buffer, because the road is so busy, and it's such a beautiful grassy space that you have there. I mean, you could have small little performance, uh, pavilion. We designed the festival park, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the pavilion in the festival park in Fayetteville, and our firm designed that canopy, that performance canopy for them, and that's been a big hit in downtown Fayetteville, in the grassy area out in front of it. So if you were to do something like that, create a buffer from the road, drop the area down, you, you could have different venues and little things on a more flattened area that terminates on the edge of the lake, that would, I think, be very attractive, possibly more attractive than a bulkhead.
And accessibility then would be, uh, equally easier for the handicap, because it just would go straight into the water.
It'd be a flat area. The, the gazebo does take up a lot of that grassy area, so that retaining wall would have to come around the gazebo, and, uh, and so sitting in the gazebo, you would be fairly higher than that grassy area, but you might be able to taper the grassy area from, from the gazebo downward to that flat area, and then just have the retaining wall along the road, and where you have that little shrubbery island with the brick pavers around it. You'd, you'd have to do some planning. But I think the cost probably would be very, very similar. I'm not sure what utilities you have under the ground. We did see an electrical vault of some type. So I'm not sure, uh, what utilities you have below the ground.
Seems like P W C dropped in a huge black thirty-six inch or forty-eight inch pipe. Maybe it's closer to the road, if I recall.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
It's closer to the road.
Yeah. So those would be issues that we're not familiar with, what utilities would be, would be in that area there.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming, again, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Um, the handicap accessible ramp. We could designate an area for handicap on this end of the swimming area, I would think. Uh, where they could just get down in there and sit in the water, without having to be mixed up with everyone that may be in the lake. And, um, just food for thought. Uh, have you thought about any of that kind of stuff? And a way to get them down in there?
Well, we've, we've given it some general thought, but schematic in nature, we haven't really come up with any, you know, solutions yet of how to do that. However, I have talked to Mr. Cruz about different ways to get handicapped people in there, and we've looked at docks, floating, we've looked at a lot of things, but they really need a stable platform. There are, there are wheelchairs out there that are handicapped for helping people enter the water. And I've seen those used where they're actually designed as, as a handicap wheelchair, to get a handicapped person out in the water and gently into the water, deep enough. And so I guess it's a matter of determining what, what they want to do. You know, do they want to just wade out there? Are they stable, you know, without the support of a wheelchair or walker? And we, we just have to determine, uh, how deep the water is and what they want to do when they get out there. We have seen, you know, uh, paraplegics swim, want to get into the water that's three or four feet deep, and don't have control of their legs and want to swim. And so it's just a matter of trying to figure out what, what, you know, are we talking about elderly people? Or what kind of people are we talking about? And that would control the design of what we're doing.
That, the term.
For a second, um, I think you wouldn't want to have a specially designated area for, for ADA handicap accessibility. I think you'd want it, the entire area to be generally accessible, mainly because, like you said, everyone who falls under the ADA has different types of restrictions, and you wouldn't want to have, you know, a designated area for that, because I, I, I think you're just asking for, for problems trying to designate that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah. The water is very shallow. It's, you know, it's only at the bulkhead where the bulkhead has been constructed, and the bulkhead would be at a similar elevation, so the water would have a similar depth, which is approximately six to eight inches deep at the face of the bulkhead. So it's very, very shallow if they get in the water. Even the swimming area, from what I understand, is only about three feet deep. It's very shallow, shallow swimming area.
Unless you get just beyond the buoys, then it gets deep.
And that can be a problem. And that can be a problem, too.
I was, I was further in the south a couple of years ago, and I actually saw, uh, elevator that dropped the wheelchairs into the water. Of course, they had a lot deeper water than we have here.
Yeah.
But they would, could drop them into the water, and they had a blowwater concrete pad with the lids around it that they could get down there and go around in the water in their wheelchairs.
Did it drop them in the water in their wheelchair?
Yes.
So it was a custom piece of equipment?
Yes.
So the pools.
Ramp opened up on one side, and opened up on the other side with a slate.
I see, so their wheelchair could.
Get down.
Right.
Which I thought was very attractive. Of course, that's probably pretty expensive as well.
Yeah.
Compared to coming up with some other way. And like the attorney said, are we limited on ADA? Do we just go to part C, or can we go to, we have to go to part B? How far down do we have to go on ADA? We have to go all the way to the end, huh?
It just has to be accessible. So someone who is handicapped, or whatever visibility they may have, can access the area. That, that's really all that's required.
So doing the second option that you just provided, that would give ADA accessibility, if the, if it's graded down enough, is that considered to be ADA accessible?
Well, I think that it would be, and if you felt that you needed a more stable surface, like a concrete ramp, that a wheelchair could go down, even with, uh, you know, a handrail on the side, you could do whatever you want to do, what you want to do. But still, you're ending up in water that's a foot deep in a wheelchair. And so then, how do they navigate from that point out into the deeper water, or, you know, what are they trying to do? I'm just not sure in an application like this. I'm familiar with it at swimming pools and different things, and I've seen it in the open ocean in the Caribbean, where a lot of the resorts, uh, you know, have wheelchairs that can, where people can get into the ocean where it's deep enough to do their, their swimming. But in a small area like you have, it's, it's really not conducive for lap swimming and things like that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Is there, do we need to make any decision this evening, or what, where do we go from here?
That's up to you all.
That was my question, Mayor, is, my question would be, where do we need to make the motion to authorize Mr. Fleming, uh, for the design?
I thought we had talked about the bulkhead versus the boardwalk. Because the boardwalk has a lot of issues wrapped around it as well. And one of them would be, how do you get people into the water?
How do you rescue somebody?
That's probably bigger than the bulkhead.
I mean, if he's provided another option to me, that we need to consider.
Yeah. Yeah, but, since he's provided another option, you might want to take a little bit of time to consider that.
I would think there's pictures that we could see of something that, similar to that, that we can kind of get a.
I think so, or a rendering could be done similar to the Withersen Ravanel. I mean, their little design could be modified a little bit. I think you probably need to maybe spend a little bit of money to do, uh, an accurate topographical survey, if you don't already have one around that area of the lake, so we know what grades we're working with, we know what grades your, your sidewalk, walkway along the road, and so you could be a little bit more accurate in terms of how much you would excavate and what it would look like. So you, you might want to have a survey done as a minimum of, of that area.
I think we were avoiding, trying to avoid spending more money.
Yes, I think a survey probably, for, for, you know, for that amount of a survey, you could probably have it done for, you know, two or three thousand dollars.
Mr. Fleming, did you say that the grading and all that would cost similar to the cost of the bulkhead?
I think the retaining wall and the bulkhead would be similar in construction cost. And the retaining wall, depending on what you wanted it to look like, if it was a concrete retaining wall, with just exposed concrete, it'd be a little bit less expensive. But if you were wanting to clad it with, you know, brick or something like that, and make it more decorative, it, it would cost more. But it would be comparable to the construction of the bulkhead. There would be some grading work done to, to build the bulkhead, because we still would be taking the bank down a little bit. We'd be taking that earth and bringing it over and putting it behind the bulkhead to create a little flat area. Whether you build a boardwalk or not, I think you would want a little flat area there, because water that comes down could hit that flat area and seep into the soil. And, you know, then we would have an erosion control filter fabric, so it doesn't make a hole through the bulkhead and erode out. So we have handled the drainage concerns that you talked about. But going with the retaining wall concept, you have quite a bit more earth to, um, to remove. You'd essentially remove all the earth in that area and then have to re, re-saw that area.
And the building materials could be, I mean, if that's going to be a swimming area, you put concrete walls, there's going to be a lot of skint knees and that kind of thing going on.
But the concrete wall would be way up against the road, up, up close to the road.
Yeah, with the grading option.
With the grading option, yeah.
Yeah, with the option he's talking about, it'd be.
Yeah. You're talking about tearing it down.
It would be right here, just going down for.
On that option, yeah.
Yeah. You're taking it down here.
Yeah.
And then pushing all the dirt out.
So really, it depends on what you guys want.
That's, that's the option he's talking about.
Another conceptual, um, plan drawn by Fleming for the, for the tier option.
Well, that's the alternative option. Of course, you can still, you can still put in the bulkhead with the ADA accessibility and the kayak launch.
Yeah, we're not really an architectural design firm. We are a structural engineering firm and a building envelope firm, but we do have a lot of aesthetic values, as you'll see in the design of your pier and your boardwalk. So we, we have a lot of aesthetic values. We like things to look nice, and we have our own ideas. Uh, Wither, Withersen Ravanel, I believe, did that.
Yeah.
It would be fine if you wanted them to look at another option, or if you wanted us to look at it. But our first step would be to get a survey of the area, locate all utilities, make sure we're not disturbing anything that's underground, and try to understand the topography and where we would put that. And then from there, try to do some type of rendering that really shows you what it looks like, because it looks totally different. If you, if you go back there along the road, you can see very well where it would be nice if the grade would go down, because then you would see the lake. When you're standing back there now, you only see the furthest extension of your swimming area. You barely see those bollards out there. Uh, you're losing so much of the view of your lake as you go towards the road. If you drop that area down and do the slope, you will stand back there and you'll see your whole grassy area. Mothers will see their children playing. Right now, you can't even see them. If they go down the hill, you don't even have line of sight if you're sitting down on the grass.
Correct.
So it's a safety issue. Um, but then if you get on the gazebo, sometimes I think the boardwalk would look nicer. Just depends on where you're looking from. You know, if you're, if you're in that gazebo, and that gazebo is elevated, and we go and excavate four feet of fill, then you, from the gazebo perspective, you look, it looks, has a totally different look, and probably not as attractive as the bulkhead idea.
As we go with the, uh, drop down, then we're dealing with, uh, the geese and the ducks, and the water moccasins, and whoever else wants to come up on shore.
Water moccasins, I didn't mention that, but that's very, very important, because the bulkhead does keep, also, the other thing the bulkhead does is it keeps debris when you have a high rain event, and you have debris that comes in the lake, sticks and logs and stuff that wash down, and they'll wash out on your grass, so you have a maintenance issue. Uh, if the bulkhead would, hopefully, that water would not rise over the bulkhead, except for in an extreme event, like a hurricane or very, very heavy rain. So, and snakes and things like that can't get up in your grassy areas as well. So, yeah, so the bulkhead, uh, I mean, you could write a whole list of advantages and disadvantages of, of different approaches.
And with the bulkhead, you can do the, I'm sorry, and with the bulkhead, you can do the cut-in. And with the bulkhead, you can do the, I'm sorry, and with the bulkhead you can do the cut-in, uh, forehand account.
Yes, you could, you could recess the cut-in, I would probably recommend maybe three areas of steps because the worst thing that I can visualize is somebody's child in the water and the parents there watching them and they are in trouble or they need help and they have to jump off a bulkhead to get to them and, and break their leg. So I, I would think you would want to have it maybe three areas of egress where a parent could quickly get down the stairs and those stairs could be re- recessed into the grass and not go out into the lake. So from the lake, you don't see a bunch of structures protruding into the lake, like little mini fishing piers or something. Or if you wanted them to go into the lake, they'd be in, in the way of people in the water there, take up some of your swim area.
Could you put a ramp right beside the steps?
You could put a ramp right beside them.
Yeah.
You know, you could put a ramp beside one of them in the middle or something. And that way a person, if they want to get into the water, they're brave enough to get in there with a wheelchair, if somebody wants to push them in the water.
Yeah.
And try to get them out, uh, that is a possibility now the ramp, uh, would be more difficult because if we're four feet then and we're, you know, that's a long ramp, so maybe looking at a fifty-foot ramp. So, you know, it may be better that you have the ramp at one end near the kayak area.
Yeah, that's what I was.
What I was talking about.
Yeah.
Was the ramp would be there, the accessibility piece would be there.
They could get there and then go out into the water from there.
And that was the original, uh, consensus of the board.
Yeah.
Um, is that we proceed in that manner and Mayor, that was the question I had was, you know, where do we make the motion to go ahead and authorize Mr. Fleming to proceed on with the design?
He can do it now.
Well, then I'll make that motion then. Then I'll make that motion that we authorize, um, Fleming for professional engineering services of, uh, phase two of the improvement plan, which includes a design for construction of new bulkhead with a kayak launch area along the shoreline of the boat ramp to include erosion control and sloping of the, uh, grassy area.
And also have, um, a cut-in, a cut-in.
When it has to be ADA accessible.
When you talk about sloping of the grassy area, you're talking about clear, gonna clear up with the road?
No, I'm not talking about the road, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the steep cliff.
Okay, I'll second that motion then.
I think what we would do is we would come up with some cross-sections through there and come up with different slopes during schematic design and then you look at it and you say, you know, maybe we give three options and then you say which one you like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, that's exactly what we're looking for, Mr. Fleming, exactly.
Okay, okay, have a motion, have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed, seeing none, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming, thank you.
Next we have a special award that we're presenting, I'm gonna come down to the podium, um.
We also have a committee that does this for the board, ask Commissioner Larson and Edwards, is it Edwards?
Yep, that's us.
Yes, it is, yes, Madam Mayor.
What we, what we have now is it was initiated, um, this board, that what we would do is recognize a volunteer, and we also recognize a small business that contributes a lot to our community, so, and we have our committee that is behind me that, um, gets the information and then, that relatively, uh, easy because we have so many small businesses do so much for our community. But this one in particular, this particular award goes to someone that has given that community a fondly place. They participate in all-time events, they provide hot chocolate for Christmas in the village, they have the classic car cruises, they have outdoor movie nights for the kids, they have school field days for Rockfish, Tulane, Collier, Baldwin, Ballbridge Farm and Alderman Elementary Schools. They've done his, donated snowball coupons to local schools, they've provided snowball syrup for the National Night Out. They fed the cotton fire department in River County, McHugh, they sponsored local softball and baseball teams, air drop off or location for soft drink tabs that are donated to Ron McDonald House and they've donated to local families in need. At this time, I'd like to recognize Big T's, which is Donna and Kimmy Gray and their family also, if you'd like to join them up here to receive this particular special plaque just for them, it's a small business community service award, it's presented to Big T's and recognition your service to our community.
And I will remind, um, our board members, which I did, was gonna do at the very beginning, is that we are being, uh, recorded for television, it does play on Wednesday night. Um, and if you don't talk into your microphone, they can't hear you. And that was one of the th- things that was brought to my attention is that you need to speak up and I tend to talk loud anyway, so I know that, um, I'm heard and I do want the rest of them to be heard also, so I just remind you tonight to, if you speak, speak in your microphone. And now I can thank a teacher for what I get to do next, um, we have special rec- recognitions tonight, so I have, I, if you'll just bear with me, I've got a lot of special proclamations to read and they're very, each and every one of them is very important. One is National Healthcare Decision Day and this is, whereas Healthcare Decision Day is dis- designed to raise public awareness of the need to plan ahead for healthcare decisions related to the end-of-life care and medical decision-making whenever patients are unable to speak for themselves and to encourage the specific, the specific use of advanced directives to communicate those important healthcare decisions. Whereas in North Carolina, the Interstate Secession Act provides the specifics of our advanced directives law and offers a model form for patients to use. And whereas it, it is estimated that only about twenty percent of people in North Carolina have executed an advanced directive. Moreover, it is estimated that less than fifty percent of severely or terminally ill patients have an advanced directive. Whereas it's likely that a significant reason for these low percentages is that there is both a lack of knowledge and considerable confusion in the public about advanced directives. Whereas one of the principal goals of Healthcare Decision Days is to encourage hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, continuing care retirement communities and hospices to participate in a statewide effort to provide clear and consistent information to the public about advanced directives, as well as to encourage medical professionals and lawyers to volunteer their time and efforts to improve public knowledge and increase the number of North Carolina citizens with advanced directives. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills and other organizations throughout North Carolina have endorsed this event and are committed to educating the public about the importance of discussing healthcare issues and choices and executing advanced directives. Whereas as a result of the April sixteenth, twenty eighteen, being recognized as Healthcare Decision Day in North Carolina, more citizens will have conversations about their healthcare decisions, more citizens will execute advanced directives to make their wishes known and fewer families and healthcare providers will have to struggle with making difficulties, making difficult healthcare decisions in the absence of guidance from the patient. Now therefore I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby recognize April the sixteenth as Healthcare Decision Day in North Carolina and I call this special observance to the attention of all of our citizens of Hope Mills. And that's that one. The next one is Administrative Professional Week and Day, April twenty-second through twenty-eighth. Whereas according to the US Department of Labor, there are more than twenty-two million administrative assistants, secretaries, executive assistants and office managers working in our nation today. And whereas because of their dis- discipline and organizational skills, administrative professionals contribute to the overall efficiency and effectiveness of any office environment. Whereas since nineteen fifty-two, Administrative Professionals Week and Day have been officially recognized and celebrated as one of the largest workplace observances in the US. Whereas during this week and on this day, we join with employers throughout the Tar Heel State to recognize the many contributions of North Carolina's administrative professionals, thanking them for their outstanding service to business, government, educational institutions and other organizations. Now therefore I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second through twenty-eighth as Administrative Professionals Week and April twenty-fifth as Administrative Professional Day in Hope Mills, North Carolina. This is a proclamation for Air Quality Awareness Week, April the thirtieth through May the fourth. Whereas clean air is essential to public health, the environment and economy in Hope Mills. And whereas we need clean air to protect and improve the quality of our forest streams and lakes for public recreation and wildlife. Whereas we need clean air to sustain tourism, agriculture and other aspects of the economy. Whereas following requirement of the Clean Air Act, the EPA is considering revising the national air quality standard for ozone from point oh seven five to point zero six oh parts per million for improved health and safety. And whereas commit, continued action to improve air quality is a major concern to the Town of Hope Mills, Board of Commissioners and all municipal governments. Whereas the citizens and businesses of Hope Mills are invited to participate in the countywide effort to lower emissions of ozone precursors. Whereas the ozone forecast season is from April the first to October thirty-first, but the first week of May has been historically designated as Air Quality Awareness Week. Whereas daily air quality forecasting will be available from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Division of Air Quality from April the first through October thirty-first. Now therefore I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, proclaim the week of April thirtieth, twenty eighteen through May fourth, twenty eighteen, as Air Quality Awareness Week and encourage all government employees, citizens and businesses in Hope Mills to observe the week with activities that promote clean air and take part in making our community a cleaner, healthier place to live, work and play. Lupus Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas each year the Lupus Foundation of America designates May as National Lupus Awareness Month to show, to show support for the estimated one point five million Americans who have lupus. Whereas lupus is an unpredictable and misunderstood, misunderstood autoimmune disease that ravages different parts of the body. It is difficult to diagnose, hard to live with and a challenge to treat. Whereas lupus can affect any part of the body, including the skin, lungs, heart, kidneys and brain, no organ is spared. The disease can cause seizures, strokes, heart attacks, miscarriages and organ failure. Lupus can be par- particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences of lupus. More than half of the people with lupus take four or five more years and visit three or more doctors before obtaining a correct diagnosis. While lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing age, no one is safe from lupus. African-Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, Asians and Native Americans are two to three times more likely to develop lupus, a disparity that remains unexplained. And whereas forty-five thousand North Carolinians are affected by lupus, now therefore I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do proclaim the month of May twenty eighteen as Lupus Awareness Month in the Town of Hope Mills. I urge each of our citizens to observe this month by educating themselves in the symptoms and impact of lupus and join with the North Carolina chapter of the Lupus Foundation of America in supporting programs of research, education and community service. May twenty eighteen is also Older Americans Month. Whereas this year marks the fifty-third anniversary of the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five, which was created to improve the welfare of our seniors. Whereas by recognizing older Americans with the respect they deserve, we honor their legacy and contributions to our community. Whereas our older citizens of today and tomorrow promise to be among the most active and engaged older adult population in our nation's history. Whereas their timeless lessons of courage, sacrifice and love expressed through their wisdom and experience have shaped the future of our community. Whereas the theme of Older Americans Month is Engage at Every Age, which encourages older Americans to stay engaged, active and involved in their own lives and in their communities. Now therefore I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty eighteen to be Older Americans Month in the Town of Hope Mills and urge everyone to honor our older adults and further urge all citizens to work collaboratively to strengthen the services provided to our older adults in ways that recognize the changing nature of their needs and that provide older adults with more opportunities to make informed choices about their lives. Our efforts can improve the lives of our older citizens and help pave the way for future generations. May is also Lyme Disease Awareness Month. Whereas infected ticks carry the bacteria Borrelia burgdiferia, which causes Lyme disease, continue to spread throughout North Carolina as three counties are now classified as endemic for Lyme disease. Whereas the total numbers of both suspected and confirmed Lyme disease cases reported in our state, to our state health department, continue to rise each year with over a thousand cases events reported in twenty fourteen. And whereas ticks commonly found in North Carolina have been known to transmit Lyme disease, Rocky Mount spotted fever, starr, babesiosis and anaphyllosis to residents. Whereas North Carolina Division of Public Health encourages physicians and healthcare providers to consider the diagnosis of Lyme disease in patients who present the symptoms of infection, even if the patient has no travel history outside of North Carolina. Whereas Lyme disease is difficult to diagnose because it imitates other conditions and no reliable laboratory test can prove who is either infected or bacterial free, which often leads to underdiagnosis or misdiagnosis. Whereas early indicators of infection include bullseye-looking rash with flu-like symptoms characterized by chills, headache, fatigue, muscle joint aches and swollen lymph nodes. Whereas weeks or months later, patients with untreated or undertreated Lyme disease can suffer from permanent and sometimes life-threatening damage to the brain, joint, hearts, eyes, liver, spleen, blood vessels and kidneys. For this reason, it is imperative that all who may be exposed to Lyme disease receive immediate treatment. Whereas the best solution to reduce the, the risk of contracting Lyme disease is awareness and education about the seriousness of this illness and the need for our residents, especially children, to practice personal preventative techniques when engaging in outdoor activities such as frequent tick checks, use of tick repellent and proper tick removal. The warm summer months are considered the most active time for ticks and when the majority of residents are exposed to ticks during outdoor activities. Therefore, it's important that residents are aware of the potential that, for acquiring Lyme disease in our town and the preventive measures they can take to minimize the risk of infection. I hereby proclaim May as Lyme Disease Awareness Month for twenty eighteen. The National Day of Prayer is May third, twenty eighteen. Whereas the National Day of Prayer dates back to February nineteenth, seventeen ninety-five, when President George Washington issued a proclamation setting aside a day of public Thanksgiving and an annual day of prayer was established by Congress in nineteen fifty-two and specifically designated in nineteen eighty-eight as the first Thursday in May. And whereas May third, twenty eighteen, has been officially designated as America's sixty-sixth Annual National Day of Prayer to pray for our nation, its people and its leaders. Whereas the National Day of Prayer has great significance for us as a nation and enables us to recall the way in which our founding fathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions. And whereas the National Day of Prayer has become a national annual observance which belongs to all Americans as a day that transcends different cultures and brings together all citizens from all backgrounds. Whereas the theme for the twenty eighteen National Day of Prayer is Pray for America, Unity, based upon Ephesians four, three, which challenges us to modify unified public prayer for America, making every effort to keep the unity of the spirit through the bond of peace. Now therefore I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, hereby proclaim May the third, twenty eighteen as the National Day of Prayer in the Town of Hope Mills and urge all citizens to observe this day by joining members of all faiths and creeds all over our community and nation in seeking divine guidance for ourselves, our leaders and our country. And this will take place at Town Hall near the gazebo at noon on May third. The local pastors will be here, uh, and they pray for all areas of our community, our state, our government and our nation. May sixth through twelfth is our Municipal Clerk Week. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. The Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on all functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk. I therefore, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do recognize the week of May sixth through May twelfth as Municipal Clerk's Week and further extend appreciation to our Deputy Clerk Tiffany Gilstead and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And again, thank you Tiffany. And that is all of my proclamations. And I will have a drink of water. At this time, we have no public hearings. Do we have any public comments? We have no public comments. All right, next, we have our consent agenda. Having after I read through this, if there's anything that the board would like removed from the consent agenda and placed on new business, we can do that. Consideration of approval of the minutes for the March twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, six P.M. special meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes for the March twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, seven P.M. special meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the April second, twenty eighteen, regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the April second, twenty eighteen, closed session. Acceptance of the March twenty eighteen financial statements. Consideration of approval of purchase for the Fire Department one I S G X three eighty thermal imaging camera with spare batteries, lanyard, and truck charger currently budgeted at a cost of eight thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-three cent. Consideration of approval of the Town Parade Guidelines for our annual July fourth parade. Consideration of approval of the road closure ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh one for the July fourth parade. And the resolution number twenty eighteen dash oh nine accepting the streets, infrastructure, and Valley Inn subdivision, section one, phase one, and two. Is there anything that you'd like moved to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor, could we pull off item G just for quick discussion?
Okay.
On the Town Parade Guideline?
All right, item G will be moved to new business and it will become item H under new business.
And with that, I move to approve the consent agenda?
Have a motion to approve with that one move of item G.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. There is no old business, so now we move to new business. Case number eighteen dash oh two oh, consideration of Billy's Thrift Store C.P. Site Plan Review. Hope Mills zoning ordinance, Zone C.P., acreage point forty-three acres plus or minus, located thirty-one twenty-one North Main Street. And it's submitted by Billy Bischoff, developer. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Board Members. First thing I'd like to do, I would like to acknowledge our Public Works Department because that last consent is in the item for the settlement of streets for Valley Inn. That is something that we have been working on for quite some time. And I would like to acknowledge them about that accomplishment. Thanks. All right, case we have before you right now is eighteen dash two zero. This is a regional map that just kind of shows you where the star is, the location of the subject property. This is an area photograph also locating subject property outlined in blue. And this is the site plan for the existing development. I'll get into the details now, but I wanted to leave that site plan up so you can see it while I'm presenting. Subject property located at thirty-one twenty-one North Main Street is a zero point four three acre parcel of land. It fronts approximately sixty-five point seventy-two feet on the east side of North Main Street with roughly two hundred and eighty-two feet of lot depth. Zone under C.P. Plan Commercial District Regulations, the lot is developed with an existing twelve hundred plus or minus square foot commercial structure. There are four existing parking spaces in the front yard and six additional parking spaces located in the rear. As it relates to proposed improvements, the previous use of the existing structure was a beauty salon and applicants proposing a thrift store that will have outdoor display of goods in two areas in the front yard during business hours only. Staff was alerted to the fact that the business was operating without the proper approvals as a result of a code enforcement violation and the applicant is attempting to bring that issue into compliance with this request. The Town Hope Mills Ordinance requires seven, total seven parking spaces with one loading space, which is provided on the proposed site plan. As it relates to site plan reviews, as you're aware, the site plan reviews submitted to the Town Hope Mills were asked to determine if the proposed development is in compliance with the Town Hope Mills zoning ordinances. The proposed site plan submitted complies with the current zoning of the existing C.P. District with respect to permitted uses setbacks and landscape requirements. As this is a site plan review, it did not require the approval of the planning, Joint Planning Board. And staff is recommending approval of this request. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes ma'am. What did you say the zoning was presently on this?
C.P.
C.P.?
Plant commercial, yes, that's correct.
Should I ask what the violations are if it's already in C.P.?
Basically, what they were doing is they had a, they're, for some reason, this is pod season with those little container boxes or something like that. And they had something, they were storing something in the front yard. So that was the code violation, but when I received it from our inspection department, I just started doing some investigating on the project. And we kind of noticed, you know, you drive by the town and you start noticing certain things. And I do remember that it was a previous beauty salon, but you know, ever since January, it started looking like something else was going on on the property. So I did some investigating and found out that it is actually a thrift store now, but they didn't come in and get the proper zoning approvals. And I did speak with the applicant, she was very apologetic. She just was not aware that she had to go through this process. Soon as I talked to her, she filed the application the very next day. So this request is for the approval of the business that she had in there. She's already fixed the code violation, she fixed that within two days. But this was unearthed as a result of that investigation.
So Madam Mayor, are all those violations being corrected, you said?
Yes, sir. They actually fixed those violations in about a couple of days. But when we found this out, this process took about a month to actually get the application filed, to get it on this agenda and things of that nature. So just to make sure I'm clear, they have fixed and responded to fixing the violations that brought the other things to my attention. And this particular request before you today is to bring the actual development into compliance as a viable business.
Any other questions, Ms. Ma'am?
May I make a motion?
You should, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the site plan. I make a motion, I'd like to go ahead and approve the site plan.
Have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next item on our agenda is case number eighteen dash oh two six. Consideration of the Papa John Pizza Store number twenty sixty zero lot line subdivision and C.P. Site Plan Review. Hope Mills zoning ordinance, Zone C.P., acreage six point eighteen, six point one eight acres, located at thirty-four oh three North Main Street, North Carolina Highway fifty-nine. Submitted by Dix Investments LLC Developer and W. Frank Lindsay Surveyor.
Okay, again, this is another regional view that shows the location of the subject property. This is an area photograph showing the, even though the arrow is pointed to the bigger white building, which is the Obalo, the subject property is in this small corner right there. And I, this is a survey just tied to the zero lot line request that you have before you. And this is the site plan that they have. I'll actually keep that up while we're continuing to present as well. As stated, the property is located at thirty-four oh three North Main Street on an existing zero point two three acre tract that is part of an overall six point one acre tract. That is developed with an existing fourteen hundred and sixty square foot Papa John's store. And the development provides for a total of eleven spaces with vehicular access provided off of North Main Street. The property is owned under C.P. Plan Commercial District Regulations. In terms of the proposed improvements, the developer is proposing to install a two hundred and sixty square foot cooler at the rear as an addition to the existing building. But because of setback regulations, that's what's driving the zero lot line. Basically, with the size of this lot, the property line in the rear, in order for them to make this particular addition, they would need to do a zero lot line to reduce that rear yard setback. So that's what the zero lot line request is for. The actual site plan review is for the request of the actual addition itself. So that's why you have the two requests before you this evening. As it relates to site plan reviews, again, this is a zero lot line and site plan review submitted. And the Town of Hope Mills is asked to determine if it's in compliance with the zoning regulations. This development is in compliance and also as a site plan reviewer did not require approval from the Joint Planning Board of Covington County. And staff is also recommending approval of this request.
Any questions?
There's no other business directly behind that, is there?
There's a couple of businesses around in the, like you have that Jiffy Lou development to the, to the south. You have a couple of beauty salons and things of that nature. You have the big.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, but not immediately behind it. Again, this is just basically an existing structure. They're just putting, they have been trying to do this for a while, at least a couple of years, but they finally worked out a way of being able to do it and the zero lot line is the mechanism that allows them to make that addition and still be compliant with the setback. So that's really what they're trying to do. But it's an existing building, again, the only thing they're adding is a cooler to the rear.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we approve case number twenty oh two six. Eighteen oh two six, excuse me.
Have a motion and have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Next thing we have is discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty eighteen dash ten admitting the Town of Hope Mills Town charge to alter the terms served by board members to four-year staggered terms as permitted by North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one oh one four and setting a date for public hearing. And I'd like to just say that I received this and it had the mayor's term as two years. And I want to go on record saying that I would prefer to keep the mayor's term at two years. The mayor being the, I guess, the figurehead, the spokesperson for the town. I think if they do the appropriate job, then the two-year term is appropriate. I think if you, if you stay on your toes, two years is fine with me. So, but I'd have noticed that it's been since requested that the mayor's term be changed to four years like the board members. And I just wanted to go on record saying that I was fine with it being two. Okay, so now we're open for discussion in reference to the resolution to change the term of the commissioners and set a hearing date. So I guess I should turn it over to Mr. Hartzog or just turn it over to discussion?
Sure, well, I'll just briefly say that I've sent y'all, I guess, two different versions now, one of which has the mayor with two years, one of which has it with four years. It's a pleasure of the board which way you want to go. But obviously, as we discussed last time, the procedure for doing this is what we would be adopting tonight is y'all would adopt a notice of intent to discuss it. So it's not actually taking any step tonight other than saying we intend to discuss this. Then it opens up, you set a public hearing, the public has a chance to come in and weigh in on their thoughts on it. But the notice of intent does need to say which version you intend to consider. Because it, while it doesn't have to have the exact language that you ultimately adopt, it has to give fair notice of what is being considered. You probably couldn't, could have the public weigh in on which one they want and go from there. But you have to adopt one or the other to say this is what we're going to consider. And then if that changes based on public hearing, you can change it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have to have a public hearing if you decide to put it on the ballot and let the people decide?
Um.
Where they would have those options, all, like three options. They basically could have the mayor's four years and board four years or mayor two years and.
Are you saying if you put the charter amendment on the ballot?
Right.
Yes.
That you would not have to have a public hearing for. A public hearing is when you go the ordinance route, you have to have a public hearing to adopt that.
I, I think what I'm hearing is it's really fifty-fifty with people, but I think that the biggest concern I hear from people is they want to be the ones to decide and not the board.
Madam Mayor, I think of what the board's talking about is just the intent to move forward with it. And I agree, I think the people should be the ones who make the decision and not us. If that's settled at a public hearing, that's fine. If not, I don't know what the cost would be to be put on a ballot. But I agree that the citizens need to know.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, Dan, I've got the right process. So what's before us tonight is for the board to approve the intent?
Yes.
Okay, on one of these two?
Right, it's just a notice of intent, which is the first step in the ordinance process, which then triggers the public hearing. And then once the public hearing is had, held, the board can vote on passing an ordinance to amend the charter. The other path that you can accomplish, there are two other paths you can accomplish this. One is go directly to the legislature and get special legislation.
Okay.
And the other is the putting it on a ballot.
But regardless of the three methods for the outcome, the intent is the first piece.
No.
No.
No, you can.
That's what I want to make sure.
The intent, the intent would be to change the ordinance.
Correct, yeah, the intent is.
That's what I want to make sure of.
If you read the intent as written, you know, it says exactly what you'd be doing. We're considering an ordinance to amend the charter and here's what we intend to adopt. Then the public would weigh in on that and then you, then you would actually vote on whether or not to change the ordinance. So that's, this, you know, as we discussed last time, this is the ordinance route. If it's the wishes of the board to go the ballot route, we could, we could do that, it's just a different procedure.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure we were clear. It's what's before us tonight is to amend the ordinance route.
Correct.
Now, if we want to put it on, if we want this issue to be put on the November general election ballot, that is a different format.
Right, but then if you put it on the November ballot, obviously it wouldn't take effect until the next election.
Okay, but it's still a different format other than what's presented tonight.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Now, I will say this, you can, you can adopt the intent to discuss it tonight. That doesn't bind the board to actually doing the ordinance. All that does is say we can now discuss it and we can now have a public hearing about it. So you could, you could go that route and still keep open the option of doing the ballot. This would just at least start that process. Doesn't mean you have to carry that process through.
Attorney here is, we could start this process, go to a public hearing and a citizen speak up. We could at that point decide to put it on the ballot if we so choose.
You could.
Or you could vote to approve it without input. Because that's what this process would start, would be at the end of this process, you could make the decision to change the ordinance, change, amend the charter.
Right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you do move forward with this and the mayor says that she doesn't think the mayor should have a four-year term.
I don't have a vote.
Would it be appropriate then for the top three commissioners? And the mayor and the two other commissioner candidates? Top three commissioners with four-year term?
Yeah, and that's what I have in the original draft with the top three. The next election would be four years and then the. The election after that, you would be voting to replace the two aspiring board members with four year terms. And that would create the effect of four year staggering.
I agree with some of my fellow commissioners that the people should be the ones to decide that. Um, with that being said. My main concern of an election, if everybody up here is replaced. Miss Adams got a job ahead of her. I mean, you don't have you have no continuity coming back at all. None. Uh, fortunately, this time Mr. Edwards were but and I were back and Mr. Mitchell had had some some time. Uh, so it wasn't so wasn't so bad, but if we replaced all six of these people up here. That could be a major disaster.
Right.
I think it could be really.
Yes, Commissioner.
I thought that was the purpose of the staggered term.
For continuity, right.
Right. So we all wouldn't be.
There's nothing to stop, you know, if you pass however you do it, if you do it by ballot, if you do it by uh ordinance. You know, all of you could be reelected or all of you could lose. It 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 has no. The ordinance or the charter change should have no bearing on how the public votes. They're gonna vote how they're gonna vote. It's just a matter of how long the term is that that whoever is elected the next election gets to serve.
Right, and Mr. Edwards, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't explain myself. That was my intent was to say that. The reason for these staggered terms was for continuity.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it back to my attention.
Well, I'm the one that brought all this up. I'm 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 fine with um, I'm fine with the citizens deciding an amendment to our charter. It is their town after all. Um, so I don't know, we. Um, well, I would one of us, if we so desire, make a motion to that effect.
Um, you could, yeah, if you if y'all want to vote to start that process of putting it on the ballot. And then I can look into exactly what steps we need to take to do that.
And we'd be talking about um, the staggered terms will start in twenty twenty one, correct?
Right.
If if the if the referendum passes in twenty nineteen.
Right, now I need what I need to figure out is whether we, I guess, if you put it the amendment to the charter on the ballot. You would be putting language similar to what we have in the ordinance change on the ballot. Um, only concern is that that language is slightly confusing when you read it. Um, but as long as, you know, there's a good, you know, public information campaign to explain the intent behind it and what it is, I think it'd be.
I mean, we don't, we don't really have, I mean, the reason I brought this up is we went to our training. And found out three hundred and eighty municipalities in the state have staggered terms and we're in a minority at a hundred and forty. And so this is not a new process in the state of North Carolina. And I I assume the other three hundred and eighty went through a similar process. And um. So there should be plenty of plenty of um information to follow.
Right, I mean, it wouldn't be too difficult to figure out exactly how to do it. You just need to pick which path we're pursuing.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That's that was my concern all along was was the path that we're gonna go with it. It's not that I'm opposed to the staggered terms. I understand the continuity piece. For the board, it's it's not that. The the path that I think we should be taking is is the path to put it on the ballot and let the citizens of Hope Mills. Vote on amending a charter that belongs to the people, doesn't belong to five of us. Belongs to the people of our community. So that's the path that I I think we should be following, Mayor Protem is is the path. That's going to put this on the ballot.
I would agree, Commissioner Bellflower, so do we need to rescind any prior motions?
I don't believe there was any, no, I don't think there's anything that needs to be rescinded. Just you y'all asked me to to put something together.
That would be my motion.
Could this be put on the twenty eighteen or would it have to be put on the twenty nineteen?
Be twenty nineteen.
Well, I think.
Cause there is an election in twenty eighteen, which is what the way this would have been. If you'd gone by changing the charter, you would have actually had the election in twenty nineteen, changing the terms of the commissioners.
Right.
Is there an election in twenty eighteen?
I was gonna say, I think that by law are.
Yes, sir.
Aren't the uh municipal elections every odd year?
Yeah, there is is there is an election, but it's not the municipal elections.
Right.
But there would be a ballot that this could be put on.
This can be put on.
A countywide election.
Yeah, that's true. Um. Would it would it be a Hope Mills specific ballot though?
It well, there there will be, it could, it would have to be Hope Mills specific, but it would be, there's a Hu- Hope Mills vote here anyway. Because of the sheriff and the other races that we would be, yeah, we've got several.
Can check and see, I would imagine there would be a cost to that, but but probably not.
I wouldn't imagine it'd be cost prohibitive to do that, so. What we can do is look into the options for doing that, whether it's a special election called or whether it's put on the two thousand eighteen ballot.
So that would be my motion, Mayor. Maybe Mayor Protem not taking anything from you, but to to proceed with the uh the ballot issue. Let's go with that format.
I second that.
And we have a a motion and a second to put this on the ballot of whichever election it could work with. In other words, if it go on the two eighteen and if it were to pass, then it would, we would follow it in twenty nineteen. We run again. If it doesn't go on the twenty eighteen, it would go on the twenty nineteen and then it wouldn't be official until the two.
Three and a half years.
Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty one about, right?
Twenty thirty.
Well, let's look at the twenty eighteen.
Yeah, so let me ask this, at this point, I guess, do we want to just check check into the options for balloting as far as. Two thousand eighteen or special election? Or do y'all want to decide tonight and vote on which specific language you want to be on the ballot? Or do we want to wait on that piece of it?
I think we just draw our town attorney to insta uh to uh figure out which one we can do, right?
We can do either one.
You're talking about.
I'm talking about the the version with the the board members four year staggered terms or the version with the the mayor and the.
Okay, that okay.
Oh, that part.
Yeah. I think the board four year stagger term is pretty sad. The question would be about the mayor.
Obviously, Mayor Warner is very experienced, but what if we get a new mayor?
Yeah, I was new. I had to be new once.
Well, we learned about collaboration. We learned, we learned about collaboration at our training and if our mayor is a rookie.
It'd be up to the board members to break her in.
That's right, I had to, I was, I had to, you see this gavel? I had to learn and that's anybody else in this seat has to learn. And it's not, this is not.
Another reason we're doing the four year term is so we can be more effective as elected leaders. Cause you can't, like, if you're a year and a half into your term and you run up for election again. He's been uh he's been one fourth of your term campaigning and including the mayor.
Well, I don't have a problem with the mayor being four, if if that's what the people want. I mean, I think that if we're, if the board's going for, then the mayor should. As well and and but it will be the people's choice on the ballot in the end.
Yeah, just on the ballot. I believe if the mayor is gonna be on the ballot as well. They need to decide if they want to vote every two years or four years for a mayor and that will make up. Help us make up our mind about the decision in the general election. Of where three commissioners or two commissioners are for your term.
Well, I I think the issue is gonna be that you need to put the specific language that you want to amend the charter on the ballot. So I don't think you can have two proposed.
And you make the decision, cause I don't have a vote in this. I have an opinion, but I don't have a vote, so.
It's gonna be up to the board to make that.
That's what I'm saying, the board makes a decision.
Hearing on that, you could have a public hearing on that and then decide which language to put on the ballot.
Have we got a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second.
Yep.
Can you, can we go with that motion again, please?
The motion is to put on the ballot either twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen based on the attorney's um.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
My my question though is which one?
Four or two for the mayors, which you're trying to get clarification on.
Decide you want four or two for the mayor and that's your decision.
Why don't, Mayor, why don't we vote on this one and then and then come back with the next one?
Okay, so we're voting.
Do this one first and then we'll decide on the other.
We're going to request the attorney to put it on the ballot either in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Okay, so all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, seeing none opposed.
Just to clarify, when you say this one.
Commissioner.
Just the commissioners.
Just the commissioners. Now we're going to the mayor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Split them out, Dan.
Right now.
Mayor Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one question, okay. The commissioners have staggered terms. The mayor would not have a staggered term. Okay. If you have a, if you have really a very effective mayor, I could see a four year term. But as we've seen in the past, if you don't, then what? I mean, there's no staggered term, you're you're four years, that's it.
But I'm, it's gonna be the same thing with you guys, y'all four years, that's it.
Well, I I know, but. Well, there's always that.
They're good.
Well, it's gonna be up to the people.
It's gonna be up to people anyway.
Pluses and minuses about it and Ms. Larson's right, it would be up to the people and that's who it should be up to.
It should be, yeah.
That's who should make the decision.
I'd make a motion that we put that on the ballot too, except on a separate, based on Attorney Harrison's advice. Uh, the people decide whether the mayor go to a four year term or not.
Or two year.
Do it that way.
No, that's not, that's not the language, Dan, you're talking about. It all has to be one amendment.
Yeah, the procedure calls for you, you if you're going to, you you say, here's how we would like to amend the charter.
Either one of four years, are you?
All in or nothing.
Right.
You have to pick which what to put on the ballot.
What would y'all like?
I would like to make a motion that we include the mayor on the four year terms. Uh, if it's appropriate during that would be the mayor and the two top vote getters. Four years and the bottom three vote getters, the two year term initially, then it'll it'll work out in the future.
That's pretty close, Mayor. That's pretty close to the language you proposed tonight.
Yeah, I think that is.
It is, it's it's the right language. We're just going in a different process, a different path.
So we're.
Yeah.
We have a motion.
You said the top three would stay for four years.
So the the way, the the two versions we have were, one with the top three vote getters and then the next time. Next two vote getters. If we do, the mayor also four years, I had it mayor and the top two vote getters and then the next time, the top three. Just so it's a three and three every two years.
All right.
I meant that to be my motion, did I not say that?
Commissioner Legg's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, okay, so carry on. Thank you, sir. All right, next we have um. This is strange too, follow this up with discussion and consideration regarding an act to allow recall of officers of the town of Hope Mills. And to amend the charter of the town of Hope Mills as requested by Commissioner Bellflower. So you have in before you um. A request by Commissioner Bellflowers to have a method of recall.
Yep.
So if you did elect somebody for four years and suddenly you decide that they shouldn't have a four year term, you have to have a way of getting them off. So I'm gonna talk about your your.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I provided each of you um just a narrative of what the recall measure would look like. I think since we're going down this road of four years, um, that's a long time. And we should have some method in place uh to rem- for the voters. The citizens of Hope Mills to remove an an elected official. And I've and the way that I've put this together is that um, you know, recall is a procedure that allows citizens. To remove and replace a public official before the end um of a term of office. And historically, recall elections are used most frequently at the local level of government. For example, we're getting ready to go down the four year uh term route. Um, recall elections are not provided for in the North Carolina constitution as they are in other states. Uh, but the governor has um allowed local officials that are subject to recall by voters under certain conditions. And the general assembly through local acts have been giving voters in a handful of places and there are a number of municipalities. That have recall in place now in their charter. One of them most recently was Lumberton. Uh, that they adopted the recall procedure and it's really, really nice the way that they have it in their charter. But an overview of it, I know this has been um, an issue that has been brought up to me was like, okay. If we go down recall, what are we looking at? And it's a petition to recall the mayor or a member of the board of commissioners shall bear the signatures equal in number. To at least twenty five percent of eligible voters for office at the time of the last election. Such twenty five percent of eligible voters would have to do it. And then the grounds of recall would be an would be a number of different issues. A conviction of a felony, an incompetence, misconduct while in office, violation of the oath of office. Failure to perform duties prescribed by law and will for misused, converted or misappropriated funds without authority. So there's some pros and cons to it. Um, supporters recall of recall maintained provides a way for citizens to retain control. Over elected officials who are not representing the best interest of their constituents. Or who are unresponsive or incompetent at the time. Then opponents argue that it could lead to an excess of democracy and the threat of a recall election lessens the independence of. Uh, elected officials, that it undermines the principles of elected. Good officials and giving them a chance to govern until the next general election. Well, if we stayed at the two year mark, that probably is true. But since we're going down the four year mark, I feel like that we should have a a measure of recall. If that's what we're gonna put on the ballot and I would like to to ask the board if we could come to a consensus. To ask our town attorney to look into the recall measure as well.
Let me jump in here and say we would need to get uh the general assembly to give a special legislation on that. There's no statute or, you know, that's, you may recall last time we talked about that one sixty eight. One oh one gave us specific things we could amend the charter. Um, recall election is not in there, so that's something that you would have to get special legislation to do. You couldn't vote tonight to allow recall elections, that would have to be special legislation.
Have to do a resolution to our general assembly in in reference to it.
Is there a motion?
And now, and that's what my motion is.
That's true. I was wondering if we should. It could be kind of premature to do this, not knowing how the voters would vote for the four year term. I mean, if if the voters turn down the four year term and we're still with the two year term, by the time you get something like that in the process. The elect is already out of office probably, just my opinion.
But let me also add, there are there are other avenues other than a recall election potentially for removal. Obviously, you know, if someone becomes ineligible to hold office, you know, the. North Carolina constitution requires you to be eligible to vote for the office in order to hold the office. So if, for example, someone was convicted of a felony or moved out of Hope Mills or something like that, became ineligible. You could just declare the seat vacant and and have the those procedures kick in. Um, if it's just, you know, if it's rises to the level of pretty serious malfeasance, there there there's some other. Um, I think it's called a motion, which I believe that Hope Mills is one of. Two entities in North Carolina that has ever done that. Um, one was challenged in court and upheld, so it's you're allowed, there is a provision there. Um, it it would have to be something rising to a pretty serious level and the board would have to give due process, hold a hearing, all that kind of stuff. Um, but there are other avenues for removal of a board member for for serious reasons. Just to put that up.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think we spent a considerable amount of money on the A motion hearing the last time we had to use it. Should the taxpayers have to pay that kind of money or would a recall be better? That's the question.
That's the decision for the board.
How long does it take to push this through once we find out if the people even want four year terms? What, how long of a process is it?
It would depend on how quickly you can get the general assembly to pass special legislation. I'm not, I'm not sure what timeline would be on that.
That'd have to be in session, have to be put on their calendar.
Yep.
And then it would have to pass through the local delegation, House and Senate. So it would, you know, it could, it's possible, cause we've done, we have done something with that, with a special bill. We did that. with a, a quit claim.
Yeah.
It is a time consuming process.
It, it takes.
It can be.
Yeah.
It can be a time consuming process.
But I think we could have like an answer within anywhere from three to six months from the legislature.
Yeah.
Could be.
Yeah.
So, depending on the timing of when we get it to them.
Yeah.
I mean, if the four year staggered term was put on the eighteen ballot.
You'd have a year to figure it out.
We, we could take action, we could take action in December.
That makes two.
Presumably you wouldn't need to remove someone the day of the election.
Yeah.
That's a move, yeah.
Alrighty, so we're gonna, um.
Table on that?
Are we gonna table?
Just table this.
Well, we, we, then we will table it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Alrighty then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, keeps it alive, that's, okay.
Same here, alrighty, live and well. Alright, consideration of attending the North Carolina League of Municipalities Town and State Dinner, May twenty-ninth at five thirty in the Raleigh Convention Center at a cost of seventy-five dollars per person, this is behind tab twenty-one. And this is taking the place of Town Hall Day.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, apparently the, they have decided to forego an actual Town Hall Day this year. And in replace of that, they're having this Town and State Dinner with, um, where you would be able to, um, dine with your, um, local representatives supposedly, I'm not quite sure how that would work, but, and then, uh, the speakers, uh, are Governor Roy Cooper, Attorney General Josh Stein, North Carolina Senate President Pro Tem Phil Berger, and North Carolina House Speaker Tim Moore. Tom Moore, sorry. So it's up to you all as to whether or not you wish to attend this, if you do, it is, um, advised that we go ahead and register you as soon as possible.
That's on a Tuesday.
Yes, sir, it's Tuesday, May the twenty-ninth, at five thirty.
This is not an overnight event, it's just a, just a regular dinner.
No, you just travel for that.
Okay, just to travel up and back, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I could go, I could do it.
Yeah, I, I can do it at this time, I can do it.
I can go.
Okay, so I'm hearing.
Yes.
You can go, you can go, and the mayor can go.
Mm-hmm, I can go.
I can't go, I'll be here by myself.
Okay.
After work.
Oh. What Tuesday is that?
May the twenty-ninth, it's the last Tuesday of May.
Yep.
I can go.
Okay. So everybody, except for Commissioner Legg.
I'll be the oddball.
Okay, that's fine.
And this is a good opportunity to, even better than going for Town Hall Day, I believe, because, you know, you'll.
Well, you might get more one on more, one on one time, perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, you might get some more attention, because there were so many people that we had to wait in line when we went for Town Hall Day to see the different legislators, this might be a better way of sitting down and having a conversation.
What's your deadline on that, Melissa, may I ask again?
Um, as soon as possible, we probably need to go ahead and get you all registered by the end of this week.
Okay, I'll see what they do with our schedule, but I don't think it's gonna change.
Okay.
So right now, I'll stay right here and hold this whole seat down up here. Everybody's seat. Mayor, you're not gonna believe what I'm gonna do while you're going.
Alright, next we have, uh, consideration of cost sharing with Cumberland County for benchmark planning services at a cost of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and this is behind tab twenty-two. I guess I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, this came out of our, my meeting on March the second with, uh, Cumberland County Manager Amy Cannon and Assistant County Manager Tracy Jackson, um, this was something that they proposed. Um. That we collaborate on a third party planning service. Um. They have sent this information concerning benchmark planning, they're headquartered in Charlotte. I did do a little research, um, on them, and they do appear to be a very reputable company. Um. With a lot of, uh, good feedback, um, they are currently working on a, a couple of, um, projects locally, um, so, but the, we would, this would be something we would share in the cost, they would split it with us essentially. And the idea behind it is they would kind of delve in a little bit into our, how the county process works. How our process works in relation to our MIA, um, area and our PWC agreement, which triggers annexation, they would take an overall look at everything and what's been happening and the issues that we've been having, and then try to come up with a solution. So. But because we don't have this money budget currently budgeted, we would need to probably do a budget amendment at some point, maybe at the end of the year, if we couldn't figure out where this was gonna come from. But I kind of felt like this was not a decision I should make, that I wanted to bring it to you all as to whether we move forward with this.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's the deliverable from this? I guess that's.
A solution to.
To.
Hopefully, it would be a solution to the issues that we're having with the, um, the the buildings that are being built in the county, um, not being up to our standards. Um, notifications, um, you know, a better system of operating with each other.
So almost looks like, you know, like, almost when I first read this, it looked like arbitration or something, it was is you've got a listening session with the Cumberland County staff.
Mm-hmm.
Then you've got a listening session with our staff.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, uh, that's the first task.
Right.
And then the second task is to prepare and present findings and draft recommendations. And then task three is the final report, so when I look at this, I say is the final report gonna be binding on both parties? If we're gonna spend sixty-five hundred. Is the final report gonna be binding on both parties? And if not, then we shouldn't be spending sixty-five hundred for something we can discuss amongst ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. That's the way I look at it, I mean, I, I yield to, to my fellow commissioners, but that's kind of, I mean, I see what the deliverable is. But what they're doing, we're, the total cost here is for twelve thousand five hundred for a couple of listening sessions. Then to roll up the differences between the two and present a final report, and if the county's not gonna honor and, and our staff is not gonna honor, then we've just wasted twelve-five on a, on a report, to do what? Versus where I think the, the county staff and our staff should come together in one room and work it out between them. I, maybe it's me, but.
I, I agree with you, but.
I, that's the way I look at this.
But I think that.
And the county manager, and the county manager and yourself are part of the discussion.
Right.
But there's.
And I, I think the reason they recommended this is because they don't think that that's possible.
Well, then are they, oh, well, then are they agreeing that it's gonna be a binding final project then?
I mean, I'm, think as far as we're concerned, it would be, but I can't speak for them, so I don't.
I think, but it would give the county something to, to use with the rest of the members of the county that we have to work with. I think that's the, the goal, would be, we have to deal, we have to work with the, the planning staff, and we have to work with all these other people that probably if they had a guide to go by, because when you sit all these people in the room, then it's, it's, they take ownership of their part.
Mm-hmm.
And so what's happening is, we don't come to any decision or come to any kind of understanding, because they're not willing to give up their, does that make sense, or give in? I think that the idea would be to have an outside source say, this is the way, what we see, and this is how we think we, the solution would come and help us as far as getting our MIA standards met. Because it's not just, you know, it's not just Ms. Cannon, or it's not just the commissioners, there's other people that get involved in.
Well, and, and I agree with you, Mayor.
Trying to say it the right way, but without saying.
Well, and that's why I went through and looked at the listening session, you have the Assistant County Manager, Planning Director, Key Planning Staff. You have a County Commissioner Chair and Joint Planning Board Chair. And then, and then they'll be discussing existing roles, responsibilities, and goals, that's from the Cumberland County staff. From our staff, it's gonna be Town Manager, Town Planner, and other key staff, it's gonna be you, Mayor, and a Planning Board Chair. And we will be discussing the roles, responsibilities, and goals. And if the discussions that come from these two sessions aren't binding between the county and Hope Mills, then why are we proceeding? That's just my question.
My question, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Larson.
The main discrepancy is roads, sewer, and fire, and roads and sewer, basically, the county does.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, right, stormwater.
Issues, yeah.
Because they don't handle that in the county, and so these people are gonna be like a median to kind of come up with a solution that.
That's the goal, yeah.
Is going, that's the key to this, because of those three areas that we're having issues in, and they're not able to agree on it, because they're saying they're not in the business of doing stormwater, and they're not in the business of doing roads. But then we're having to deal with them not being in the business of it, and then it's handed to us, and we have to come up with terms. So these people are gonna come in and help come up with a solution that's gonna work.
So you think this company's gonna knock down the silos?
Well, when we had this meeting here, I felt that there wasn't any clear, uh.
Or definition.
Uh, resolution at all, and in fact, I felt that our staff was kind of met with a little bit of pushback in some of their concerns about what they were seeing, at least that's the way I took that meeting when we were here with them. So maybe with a third party, they would have more opportunity to not have the pushback that they're getting.
Madam Mayor, from our meeting, I understood their standards were our standards.
I don't know.
The building, I think it's me. Might be just the compliance issue, and then the roads are DOT issue. So somebody's gotta reach out to DOT, right?
We're, we're currently working on that already, so, yeah, trying to facilitate.
So. I mean, a collaboration on streets, what is that about, man?
I'm sorry?
If there's a collaboration with DOT for the streets, we, our main problems here have been streets, a couple of building issues, but their standards for buildings are our standards. It's.
But they don't follow up on it, that's the problem, they don't, yeah.
It's compliance, it's compliance.
Yeah, they don't, it's compliance, yeah.
May I ask a question, are we the only municipality who is being asked to do this? Or is every municipality in the county being contacted?
It's my understanding, it's just us for this, because we're the only ones that are speaking up about it.
Fayetteville has their own, I mean, they don't, they have their own departments for all of that, so they don't need the county in that respect.
I'm trying to find a loophole that they're getting at, a loophole somewhere, just can't find it.
I thought it was me, Commissioner Legg, and I'd, I'm still I still have co- conflict with spending sixty-five hundred dollars, taxpayer dollars, on something that's, can be facilitated between two, between two parties in a room.
Let me ask you something.
I just, I, I see this all the time, and.
Okay, and I will tell you that it has been attempted many times. And it's, it has, it is better than it has been, but every time you have a change in governing body. There's nothing to fall back on, so you're very, you, this group right here would be very knowledgeable. When we change over, and you have people bring zoning or bring planning stuff to us. Or even the general developer that knows it's easier to go through the county and then bring it to Hope Mills, which we see happening a lot. What this would do is have it so that now everybody like the County Commissioner Chair, the previous County Commissioner Chair was not really aware of how much authority the Joint Planning Board had. And then when he found out, then he, that's what I'm saying, there's people, because of their roles, they don't really have an understanding, so this person, this group would come together with all of these entities, and it could, it, you know, there's that name, could be anybody that's a part of this committee. Because the, the information then would be the same for all of us. I understand what, why this would be needed, because I've been a part of a lot of these, um, meetings. And I can tell you, it's very difficult because of the, the roles different people have, just like right now, we got a new, uh, County Commissioner Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, you don't have a new mayor in Hope Mills, so I know what we went through the last two years. The new County Commissioner Chair has to learn, because he hasn't been there.
Well, I understand that, Mayor, but my, my issue comes back to if both parties do not adhere to the recommendations.
It's too many, it's too many voices in the parties. You, you understand, it's not just, it's not just two or three people, it's different groups. I personally think it would be a good idea, and I'm, you know, I don't have, um.
What's the return on investment for sixty-five hundred, what's the return?
I think. I think you're gonna, you're gonna save money in the long run, because the amount of money we're having to spend to clean up things that aren't being done like they should be.
Again, that's compliance issues, if everybody's doing their job.
But who's gonna, who's gonna hold them accountable, if you do this, then you've got some accountability standards there.
But they're not gonna honor it.
I believe they will, or you wouldn't have these people coming to the table. That's why they're listening to us now, I can tell you, if you back us up to two thousand twelve, you wouldn't have had this much recognition and this much attempt to work something out. That's why I say, they're to the table, and they're willing to work with us and listen, and this is the, uh, the, the best way of doing that. And if you disagree with that, that's fine, but I don't know where we go from here, if this is the olive branch they've passed out and said, let's do it this way. That's, that's what I see this as, is a, a means to come to a solution to where we are. But, again, y'all have to make that decision, spend the money and save.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any question, more discussion, or?
I think an example of one of the things that we have found is the development in our MIA that hasn't been given to our town on the front end. And it's been from the county side, not wanting to share it, not petty. But that was something that we've had to deal with, that this is one of those things that can be talked about and resolved, so that the rest of it starts, the wheels start going into motion, that these are the steps that they have to do to include us on the front end, instead of waiting afterwards where we're cleaning up a situation. Because they're going by paperwork, DOT has given them and said, we've done this, we've done this, done this, but then when we get it, it hasn't really been done, but they say, well, the checklist's here, we've got it. And then we're stuck, but this way we could be included, hopefully, on the front end, if these are what the people can work out in the end for us.
And where do we go from here if it just doesn't work out, what's the next step? I don't know, we'll probably get to that.
Well, if you, you gotta look at it this way too, is part of the issues that we've had has been because of situations in the past. We have had situations where we didn't really care what they were doing, because they were too far out.
Right.
And we didn't want to take them in, well, now we realize that in some of those cases, we probably made some mistakes, because they're not really too far out with two ninety-five coming in and with all the things, so we, we have set some examples ourself by our not doing what we were supposed to do. You know, we say, well, we don't wanna take them in, because we gotta maintain the sidewalks. We don't wanna take them in, because, because they're too far out, we don't have the infrastructure to go out there. So what's happened is there's been a lot of miscommunications, I believe, and now that we're at this point where we really do want to be aware, we're more aware than we've ever been. And they're listening to us, whereas before, we could sit back here and complain while we wanted to, and we didn't have that voice. I believe now we've got that voice, and that's why this is a method to bring it all together, and we all do the same thing, I mean, that.
Sounds like it's money being spent to build up stronger liaison, uh, a due diligence process. Sounds like it's money being spent to build up stronger liaison, uh, a due diligence process.
I see where the, I, I see where the return is. I truly do. But can I recommend, Mayor, that on, on our side? Can we add, uh, a fellow commissioner to the team besides yourself? Can we do that?
These, these were suggestions from, from, uh, the county, but, so I don't think they would have any problem with adding.
That won't mind. It says other key staff or somebody else. So, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem speaking up for Hope Mills.
Pat Hall.
Pat Hall's on the train board, yeah.
Yeah, she's our chair.
But she's not the chair, is she?
Not now, she's not. She was.
Didn't you say you had to be the chair or just?
Well, she's our representative.
Our, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve the benchmark planning for the sixty-two fifty with, um, allowing one commissioner to be appointed as a liaison on that committee.
And I'll second that, Mayor. After rich discussion. And I thank you.
Very well. And I would do the same thing for Hope Mills wherever I may be. So, a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have, um, consideration of the bid for sidewalk construction on Rockfish Road in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. With Charles Hugh Construction LLC and Budget Amendment Number Twenty-nine and Number Thirty. And consideration of the authorization of the Town Manager to execute the contract. And this is finally the grant money that we got many years ago. That the amount has grown because of taking so long to get to this point. But that's what this is about. And I guess we need to, Melissa, do you, Ms. Adams, do you need to speak to this, or?
Um, just if anybody has any questions, um.
I guess our match went up a little bit for the difference in what we projected.
Our match is, yeah, uh, well, the projected funds for the project are three ninety-nine, three hundred thousand ninety-nine. Um, we would be using eighty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-three that are stormwater directly related expenses, um.
We're okay with the budget and everything? I'd make a motion to approve that.
One second. Can we have a motion to approve, um, Budget Amendment Number Twenty-nine and Number Thirty? And also, within that, is it okay to authorize Town Manager to execute the contract?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Just have a motion to have a second. And all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Thank goodness.
Alright, good, yes. When can they start?
Yeah.
Mister Cruz, I'm sure you're saying, thank you, thank you. So, um, any idea on? I mean, we've, we've got to get the contracts signed. I, I, it'll probably be a little while before we'll have any kind of a timetable for you.
Try to stay away from our holiday festivities, fourth of July. Be a lot of people in town.
Next, we have, we moved the parade information to, uh, Item H. And, uh, Mayor Pro Tim asked for that to be done. So, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah.
My comments is, I didn't really know what action staff had made, um. The last parade we had was some two and a half, three hours almost. And, um, it seemed like every, it's nice that all the citizens wanna participate, but there were large gaps in between the different entries. Have we taken any steps to maybe limit the size of our parade? Or so that our citizens aren't out there three hours? Um, we used to be able to do it in an hour, hour and a half at the most. Do we know?
Um, well, Mister Bullock is not here. Um, he had a, um, medical procedure done today. So, he's not available tonight, but, um.
Can we table it?
I know that it was discussed, um, you know, what we, some different options that we could do. Um, possibly, um, having, uh, some of the staff in the, um, gators, you know, kind of. Being a little more proactive in riding along and making sure things are moving along. Um, I think we did have like a dance team at the, at the Christmas parade that actually stopped and performed. And, you know, we can't really have that and keep things moving along. So, obviously. So, I know that there were some things that were discussed. What the outcome of those discussions were, I'm not really sure. Um, whether there was, you know, a plan, uh, to put something in place. We can certainly table it. We don't, we're not pushed for time. Obviously, July fourth is not right around the corner. But it'll be here sooner than we know. So, um, I think we could certainly postpone this until the next meeting.
And he has added in here, do not stop, keep it going, avoid gaps.
Right, and.
And that's his, that's the languages in these guidelines.
The attorney has pointed out, though, that we probably need to change that to say unless there are, there is a safety reason for stopping. So, because you don't want someone taking that idea, oh, I can't stop. And then, something bad happen and then everybody keeps going. So, there has to be some language in there for that. It's self-evident, but sometimes you have to spell it out for people.
I'll make a motion that we table this item till Mister Bullock is here to give us more information. So, if that's appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion to table this until, uh, our next meeting.
Okay, May the seventh.
May the seventh, okay. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Alright, next, we have our managers update.
Okay, and I apologize, I have a little bit of a lengthy update, but I'll try to move through as quickly as possible. Um, Finance Director Drew Holland and I have met with all the department heads, uh, to review their requests for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year budget. We are going to be presenting the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen proposed budget. To you at the May seventh Board of Commissioners meeting. At that meeting, we will ask that you set a date for the budget workshop. Uh, Cumberland County Planning Staff and the Town of Hope Mills Plan Review Staff have a scheduled meeting on this Friday, the twenty, twentieth. At ten AM to conduct a follow-up meeting to discuss streamlining the notification process between the county and the town. Um, little, you know, I'm a little apprehensive about the meeting, but we'll see what happens. So. Um, Odyssey Court Stormwater Project bids, uh, were sent out on April the twelfth. And will be open on April the twentieth at four PM. This is the second bid opening for this project. Update to the Street Paving Project, the contractor worked on paving activities for selected streets in Fairway Forest. Friendship, Brightmore, and the, and Fountain Lane. Milling of streets on Clifton Forge, portion of Thompson Circle, doing edge milling. Lake Forest Road and Spruce Street, full width milling and edge milling on Well Street. Raising structures for other streets within the town. Concerning the Johnson Street Sidewalk, McGill Associates presented public works staff with seventy-five percent drawings. For preliminary review. That review was conducted and the firm will be continuing with the design process. Damaged areas from Hurricane Matthew, work completed to date on East Patterson Street. The bank clearing along the street is complete. Hundred percent of rock has been installed on the bank. Upper portion of the embankment was matted April the third. Concerning Davis Street, the riprap has been placed. Sod and seeding took place on April the eleventh. Road section is being prepared for asphalt placement this week. Thoroughbred Drive mobilization took place on April tenth. Demolition of damaged asphalt started April eleventh. And removal of unsuitable soil and placement of stone base will follow. Concerning the Hope Mills Congestion Management Plan, a final, uh, final report of, a report of final recommendations. Is expected sometime this summer. Concerning the Hope Mills Lake Maintenance and Operations Policy, Policy Training was conducted on April the fifth. The Lake Park Rules signage has been installed. That was installed on April the twelfth. Catch and Release signage was posted on April the eleventh at two other locations within the park. And at the end of the boat ramp, signage was installed on April the twelfth as well. We will continue with basket inspections for eels twice a week through June fifteenth. And there was no eel count last week to add. So, we just have the one eel we've caught.
That's expensive for one eel, isn't it?
Expensive one eel, exactly. Due to the fact that the sump pump and the actual trap area at the end of the eel ladder is in a high-risk location. That also requires wading into water. Deputy Fire Chief Steve Lopez, Lopez has built two steel ladders to reach those areas. Both are on the western side. The one by the trap area is eight foot long and the one leading to the entry point is twenty-one feet long. They are of overhang design and very stable and made of high-grade steel. Which will provide a safer and more direct entry and egress to the maintenance points and minimize actual water contact. Both of these areas will require some security measures. And those will be implemented shortly to reduce any trespassing or the possibility of anybody vandalizing the area. Ms. Emily Greer will be visiting from the Wilmington United States, um, Army Corps of Engineers Office. To conduct a dam site and eel monitoring system inspection. She will also be reviewing the progress of the lake recreational improvements. The inspection visit has been scheduled for May the tenth at eleven AM. Concerning the proposed Chick-fil-A, Plan Review Staff, uh, is meeting with representatives of Chick-fil-A. This Wednesday, April the eighteenth, for a sketch plan review of the proposed development. The goal is to develop the strategy for a submission of voluntary annexation petition. Staff will be meeting with members from Larry King and Associates on a proposed multifamily development in Tremor Village. When the initial overall development was initially approved, it was slated for this type of development. So, there will not be a need for approval from the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners. I will update you on the results of the sketch plan meeting, which is set for Thursday, April the nineteenth. Staff is also meeting with Larry King and Associates for a sketch plan review for Section Three of Valley End One. And we anticipate that this new phase will consist of approximately forty single-family homes. Staff held a sketch plan review meeting on Thursday, April the twelfth for the development of a new gas station. At six seventy-four Chicken Foot Road. This is at Exit Forty-One off of Interstate Ninety-five, across from the Bojangles. The property is currently zoned CP and is in the Town of Hope Mills limits, town limits. Parks and Rec Director Kenny Bullock has asked that I, uh, inquire as to whether you would like to ride a float. Or ride in a car for the July fourth. Um, so, possibly maybe by the next meeting when we, if you can have an answer. Cause he needs to order the floats, um, probably sooner rather than later. Maybe before the next meeting, if you could let us know. You can email me and I'll forward it to, uh, Mister Bullock as to whether you'd like to ride on a float or if you're driving in a car. Um, we failed to mention on the, um, on the reminders that the Lake Advisory Committee. Has a meeting on Tuesday, April the seventeenth at six PM at the Parks and Rec Building. And I apologize to the chairperson for, um, leaving that off. Um, also, uh, it was brought to my attention that possibly we may want to think about the business of the month. And the volunteer of the month, maybe moving that to every other month or even quarterly. Because I think the fear is that, um, we're gonna.
Run out of bits.
Limit, yeah. I wanted to try to find a, a nice way to say that, but, um, and also too, as far as the volunteer of the month. I think I mentioned that one of the criteria could be that they be, um, a town resident. And I'd like to rescind that if I can. I think that the volunteer of the month, if there's someone that's coming to the town, which there's several. We have several people that I would like to see recognized as a volunteer, not a business. They don't live here in Hope Mills, but they come and do a tremendous amount of things for the town. So, with your, um, at the pleasure of the board, if we could kinda change that. Um, I think in my last email to the board, I mentioned Karen Campbell with Pony and Friends. I'd like to have her recognized. Also, the CERT team, they, they do a tremendous amount for the, for the town. So, I'd like to see them recognized as the volunteer of the month. So, but possibly tweak it to maybe trying it every other month. And then, or maybe even every quarter.
Any consensus from us?
Okay.
That's fine by.
If I can get a consensus.
Oh, I agree.
Fine by me, regardless of where they live.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that including, um.
Business of the month.
Every, every, every quarter, is that what you're saying?
Either every other month or every quarter, whatever you all prefer.
I can see.
But I think we're gonna run out soon every month.
I think the business of the month, you know. But, um, I think the volunteers, we have beaucoup volunteers that need to be recognized every year. So, I've recorded that in only four years.
Every other month?
You wanna try, we could try every other month and then tweak it as we need to. If we're see, if we see we're not getting the applications in, then we can maybe back it off a little. Okay. I'll do that. And that's my, that's my. Thank you.
Do, do we have a Finance Committee meeting coming up?
Yes, we do, um, on Thursday.
This, okay.
It's Audit Finance, um, Committee Meeting on the nineteenth at five o'clock.
Okay.
Is there any reason why we need to wait on the siding on the parade issue? Is there, can y'all come, come to consensus whether ride together or ride separate?
I think it would be better for.
You want us to email back and forth?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I personally like the classic cars.
The car.
I like the classic cars. I read, I think we've done the float and we didn't have as much participation as we do with the classic cars. And we've got our signs. Now, we can put it on the side of the car, too. And the, so that, that's my. How would you feel, sir? Let's start that in.
I'm good with the car.
You're good with the car?
I, I think it's because it's worked very well over, over the past parades. That's, and that's why.
I mean, I don't care. I'll go with the majority, but I have a comment that, um, they'd like to see us all together. Instead of separated like we have been. But that's just.
I can roll either way, but I just complained about the length of the parades. And you're talking about six entries versus one. I can go either way with it.
I could care less.
The only reason I like to drive my own vehicle because I can pick me out a place to park so I can get out easy. But I think Ms. Edwards may be right. The more unity that we show, I feel. Would build our, help build our image if we can have something besides, um, hay wagon. Maybe pontoon boat or something, you know.
I think, I think too, the, the issue that we faced when we did the float was that then normally, there's family members that ride with us. And that was the issue that you had to limit. And then, what happened is we really didn't have a good turnout for the, the float. Many went ahead and drove their truck and stayed.
Or we could agree to do it. One parade, one way, and other parade, another way.
Yeah, that is, it's fine. I just think the main thing is either way, we got, Kenny's got to know to get the, get whichever.
He's got to order the float or the, the materials for the float. And then, the classic cars, he has to order those. So, either way, we need to know soon.
I make a suggestion. We ask Mister Bullock to do the float.
You wanna do the float during Fourth of July, Fourth of July, and then we'll do the car thing in Christmas time?
You just mentioned speeding it up. See, six vehicles, three to one.
Good with me, that's true.
The, the Fourth of July parade is quicker than the Christmas parade.
Yeah.
We don't have any bands on the Fourth of July. Fourth of July, the Fourth of July goes by quicker.
It's just straight.
I mean, normally, cause you're lacking the school bands and stuff.
It's my understanding the Christmas parade's gonna go that way. From here to Hope Mills Middle School because the bands carrying those big horns and things have to walk up the hill, I hear. And by the time they walk over from Hope Mills to here, they're exhausted. And by the time they walk over from Hope Mills to here, they're exhausted. And some of the bands said that they had to walk up that hill again.
Did you make a motion or?
I made a suggestion that we use a, a float.
Alright, we have a float for the fourth of July, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
A suggestion, right?
Yeah.
He made a motion.
But we're on a suggestion.
On the hay wagon, alright.
Okay, so you've voted on the float.
For fourth of July.
With umbrellas, cause it's gonna be hot.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna miss my air conditioner in my Chevrolet truck.
Yeah.
You made the motion, sir. Okay, alright, next we have, um. The, uh, next, we've got the committee members, uh, the committees that are meeting, the other thing that's important is May third at noon. We have the National Day of Prayer service and invite the commissioners to please join me. Uh, we have a, a good turnout from our local representation, we usually have a, a good turnout of people that stop their work day and come up. Then we have another food, food truck rodeo on May the third at five. Staff comments?
I don't think we have, I'm, I'm done. Yep, I'm done.
You have none?
Thank you.
Official comments, is there anyone that has official comment they'd like to?
Ma'am Mayor, I'd like to thank everyone who was here earlier. They must've drug it out because they left. I think we all need to enjoy this North Carolina weather while we have it, but it's gonna be hot pretty soon. Heard a lot of compliments to the Hope Mills Police Department, thank you for the patrolling in the areas. Especially, uh, uh, behind Village Green, uh, all the new subdivisions back there. And in your neighborhood, Ms. Alyssa. So thank you guys for, for picking up patrols, for what you do, and stay safe.
And I appreciate the fellow elected getting us out of here in two hours, fifteen minutes, eighteen minutes.
And all those proclamations, very good.
Yeah.
I also wanna thank, uh, Parks and Rec and the Youth Association for opening day on Saturday. Um, and I will say that I, I believe it would be appropriate to send the Swamp Dogs, uh, thank you. Because they, not only was it, um, well-received, but parking, and the, the Sheriff's Department actually came and helped with, uh, getting traffic in and out. Um, but plenty of seating, I only heard positive things, e- even though it was away from Hope Mills, I think many people realized that it, for the size we are, that it, it went very well there. And they were very cool, very nice to us, the, the staff of Swamp Dogs.
We could prepare a thank you letter, um, on behalf of the board, so, okay.
I think that would be really. I think that would be great, cause that, that was really.
Ma'am Mayor, may I interject on that? Um, our president, Mr. Armstrong, was fortunate enough to get the sheriff's department out there free of charge. So if you see one of the deputy sheriffs, thank them, or see Mr. Wright, thank him. And for those who weren't there, you guys missed a fabulous ceremony, fabulous. That's all I got to say. I'm hungry.
Pushing the turn.
Alright, motion, a second, see you all, those that will be here on Thursday and the rest of you, I'll see you hopefully May third.